Good evening, all. I'd like to welcome you to the village council meeting on Monday, October 28th. The legislature please hold.
Commissioner Reed.
Present.
Commissioner Maloney.
Present.
Here. Here. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as well.
You have your practice be drafted minutes from our previous meeting on September 13th. Do you have any questions, comments, or suggestions? If not, let's see motion to approve the question this time.
So, Ms.
Second. Motion, second. Let the court please call roll.
Commissioner Maloney.
Yes.
Commissioner Paul.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes. Yes, and motion carries. Recognition, proclamations, appointments, and presentations. We have us with us this evening, uh, the auditors from Waterbuck and Amen to be the village's highest part of the year 2021 audit presentation. So. All right. You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We're good.
Great. Uh, my name is Brad Porter. I'm here on behalf of Waterbuck and Amen as the audit manager for the village to present to you the results of your fiscal year 2021 audit cycle. Uh, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be present here this evening. Uh, it is nice to not be stuck behind a computer screen. I will say that until. Uh, and before I go any further, I'd absolutely like to thank Alan for all of his efforts throughout the course of the audit cycle. Uh, the village has shown drastic improvements year after year in this short time here as it relates to some of the financial reporting procedures, uh, number of audit adjustments, so on, so forth. So he does a tremendous job in terms of keeping the general ledger clean and making sure that all the checks and balances are in place. So thank you very much, Alan. There are three pieces of required communication of the issue as part of the audit process. Uh, the first that I'm going to cover here this evening is actually not in front of you. It's a paper copy that you can obtain from Alan and it's also in electronic format in your board documents. So, um, that is what we call our SAS 114 letter. In accordance with Statement of Audit Standard Number 114, we're required to disclose whether or not we got any disagreements or difficulties during our audit process. And I'm very happy to report that there were no such disagreements noted within the body of that letter. Uh, next, if I could please have you turn to page nine of the comprehensive annual financial report. That is the thicker of the two bound documents that you have in front of you here tonight. On page nine, you should find what appears to be an award, and that is certainly what this is. Uh, the village was the recipient of the certificate of achievement award for fiscal year ended, uh, April 30th, 2020, and will be working hand in hand to apply for the fiscal year 2021 report as well. Uh, so congratulations. Really, this represents the highest form of financial reporting excellence that any governmental entity can receive in the governmental accounting world. So, um, really, there's a couple of different components within the audit report that differ from a standard audit report. Uh, certainly a time burden placed on staff, uh, as I'm sure Alan can attest, uh, to meet the compliance requirements of that program. So congratulations. Uh, turning to page 10. You should find our Waterbuck and Amen letterhead there. This is our independent auditor's report. So in addition to stating your responsibility as management of the village, which is ultimately to prepare and provide us a set of clean financial statements to work off of, we go on in our opinions paragraph to issue an unmodified opinion for fiscal year 2021, uh, which, once again, cleanest form of opinion that any entity can receive in the governmental accounting world, uh, and ultimately states that we believe as your auditors that the financial statements are presented fairly and that there are sound internal controls in place. I want to point out one very important section to you as a board, and that's, that can be found on pages 12 through 23. We, as your audit firm, are certainly, uh, no strangers to, um, some of the glaze overlooks that we get as we look at our financial statements sometimes. So, uh, I certainly wanted to point out our NDNA section here as it provides a great narrative analysis of a lot of the highlights for fiscal year 2021. Um, it's got comparative data, charts, graphs, et cetera. It will really give you a great bird's eye view of fiscal year 2021 as a whole. And lastly, uh, we've issued a management letter, which is the second bound document that is in front of you. The primary purpose of our management letter is to convey any internal control recommendations that we've identified, any best practices in the industry, as well as any, um, in general, more so transparency type issues that we would like the board to be made aware of. Um, I'm very happy to report the one current recommendation that we had this year was simply an upcoming accounting pronouncement, so nothing that you as a board need to take action on. Uh, this is GASB 87, which is going to change the accounting for leases throughout the audit report. Uh, this does not go into effect until fiscal year 2023. So again, this comment is simply included to provide some transparency of future updates to your audit report, uh, in 2023. There are a few prior recommendations that we've got in the body of, uh, this letter as well, so I would encourage you to read through those. Uh, we do include a status paragraph on each of those comments that will allow you to see whether or not that comment has been implemented, repeated, or removed entirely. That concludes my brief recap of the audit. I would be happy to field any questions that you might have. At nine, thank you very much for the opportunity to share.
Well, God bless. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Everybody, stay safe.
Any action that we need to take, that's just a presentation. We don't need to take any bold or deceptive. Uh, second item here or five is proclaim the month of October as the domestic violence awareness month. The proclamation states that to raise awareness of domestic violence and the village of Pales Park stands with pillars community health message that past ten love stars at home. There is no place near village for domestic violence. Consent agenda, all items on the consent for agenda continue. Were brought forward as a direction of the board commissioners. Again, will be an actual motion. Quick discussion of desires. That item will be approved in the consent agenda. A to approve resolution 2021 R 07, a resolution endorsing 2021 action plan for the Chicago region. Resolution states that the village of Pales Park supports goals and objectives checked is of the 2021 action plan for the Chicago region and lets us to take strategic action to achieve these goals for the more resilient, equitable, and healthy future. I mean to approve resolution 2021 part eight, a resolution acknowledging completion and completion of the common green region program of those hills park pollinator garden project. Resolution states that those of Pales Park participated in common green region program created pollinator, uh, pollinator garden and those committed equal part mash requirements of 55 dollars. Item C, to approve the intergovernmental government agreement between the village hills park and the village of Pales Park, the provision of 100 million all inspections to Pales Park by time, the time period of December 1st, 2021, to November 30th, 2022, at a cost of $100 for reflection. Item D, to write a by opinion of invoices on the warrant list dated September 27th, 2021, the amount of $53,000, $25,556. Item E, to write a by payment of invoices on the warrant list dated October 11th, 2021, the amount of $109,093,061. Now, out, to write a by the supplemental warrant list dated October 11th, 2021, annual checks per recurring wire transfers, the amount of $417,281,81 cents. And finally, G, to approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated October 25th, 2021, the amount of $55,000, $25,556. But a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So. I'll say.
Hearing the motion, the second, let the court please call roll.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Commissioner Maloney.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, and motion carries. Any amounts of all business being brought to the council at this time. Information and updates, public records, and streets, preparation report, Commissioner Maloney Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Maloney. I just have one item on the agenda. It's regarding our MFT pavement program. On August 9th of 21, the village council awarded the 2022 MFT project to Lindell Brothers in the amount of $728,235, with authority to the village engineer to spend up to $800,000. We have our first pay estimate in the amount of $80,084.26. We're asking for approval of this pay estimate. This amount covers all work done to date, but withholds 10% as retention. Any other questions? Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the pay estimate number one for the 2022 MFT pavement improvement project to Lindell Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $80,000,
Second. Motion, second, and are there questions? If not, um, of course, you're called.
Commissioner Maloney.
Yes.
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 Yes, and motion carries.
And then just to let everyone know, to put on their calendars, just want to confirm the date, we will be doing our annual, um, holiday treat lighting on Thursday, December 2nd. Uh, so keep a lookout for posts on Facebook, Instagram, on our signage outside, and your email blast that you get, but that'll be coming up, and we would like everyone to attend. And that concludes my report.
Commissioner Reed, building of public property.
Thank you, Mayor Maloney. First of all, I'd like to say it's an honor and a pleasure and a privilege to be back amongst you in person.
Here.
I missed you. I'm back for a little while, we'll see. None of more important matters. Building Department report. For tonight on October 23rd. As the leaves change and the days get shorter, take the time to prepare for the oncoming cold weather. Change your furnace filter schedule, excuse me, change your furnace filters. Schedule the chimney sweep. Replace batteries and smoke detectors. Test your emergency backup generator. Inspect and clean your gutters. Rank your leaves. Disconnect your garden hoses. Thirty-eight inspections were completed to the time period of September 8th through October the 19th, resulting in $20,697.49 in common fees. Fiscal year to date, we have accrued $173,965.49. And that concludes my.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Paul, Paul, Office Safety Report.
Thank you, Mayor Maloney. So I present, uh, for your interest, the police activity report from the 13th of September through October 24th, so roughly a little bit more than five weeks, five and a half weeks. Five thousand 218 calls for service. This, that's about what we've been looking at for the last 18 months or so, about a thousand calls for service a week. Uh, uh, issued 80 adjudication tickets, an additional 31 traffic tickets, 33 written warnings, and an additional 42 verbal warnings, took 54 additional case reports, 26 accident reports, arrested five adults, no juvenile arrests, impounded four vehicles, and performed 37 senior checks, as well as an additional 66 citizen assists. So that is what Pales Park Police Department's been up to. Uh, then a couple of quick, uh, announcements. Um, the first is, uh, Halloween is coming. It's on a weekend this year, so, uh, the 31st falls on a weekend. Um, we've never really set Halloween trick-or-treating hours for the village, nor do I intend to today. Um, uh, we ask that if you don't want to participate as a homeowner or as a tenant in, uh, trick-or-treating, certainly that's your prerogative, leave your porch lights off. Um, our suggested hours are somewhere where would normally be after school hours, but since it's on the weekend, there is no school. Um, uh, so again, uh, we'll leave it to your family's discretion. You want to trick-or-treat in the afternoon, have a great time. Uh, generally, we'd, uh, not like to see a lot of people out after it gets really dark, which is usually somewhere, sunset's a little after six these days, so six thirty, quarter to seven, just because, uh, you may have noticed the paucity of streetlights that there are in Pales Park. Uh, and again, if you're going to be out trick-or-treating after dark, respect the fact that it can be hard to see the people that you're with. So know your routes, uh, make sure that you have something reflective. And speaking of reflective, the Pales Park Police Department has at no charge to anyone who comes and gets one, uh, trick-or-treat bags, which are, I'm told, reflective within the light. They look pretty just orange and black. Uh, so you can stop by during normal, uh, during normal business hours to the capture center where the police department is located, and we'll give you virtually as many bags as you ask for, as long as it's in single digits. Um, uh, and, uh, those are provided to you through the courtesy of the Pales Park Police Department. Um, some other thoughts from the police department about trick-or-treating. If your child's going to wear a mask, it's useful if they can actually see out of it. Um, uh, so those are good things to check ahead of time. Uh, glow sticks, flashlights if they're trick-or-treating after dark. Um, uh, no unwrapped candy, please. Um, so if you are the parent who sorts through, remove those vicious Snickers bars, which are danger to anyone besides an adult, um, uh, then, uh, make sure that you've gone through their candy. We've not had issues with candy in the park, but, um, the days of homemade treats issued for Halloween are long gone. So again, um, just be aware that that's coming up and, uh, act accordingly. Careful of the kids out there. And then perhaps a, a more important announcement, but just as, uh, just as important to the village, uh, I want to just call your attention to the Pales Park Police Foundation. This is a nonprofit local institution that was founded years ago to try and help, uh, the Pales Park Police Department, um, afford the things that, uh, otherwise are difficult to be able to pay for. So I'll give you a couple of examples. When we get a new squad car or we get a used squad car that we have to outfit to Pales Park standards, it's about another $12,000 on top of the cost of that car. So while I try and budget for those every year, sometimes those costs can be difficult. We've tried to put lots of, uh, electronic, uh, communication equipment in the cars. I've never seen anybody write anyone, uh, ticket or, uh, solve a crime by sitting in the office. So we try and keep our officers out on the street. One way that they can do that is now all of their reports, generally 90% of their paperwork can all be completed while they're out of patrol. So, uh, that kind of technology is generally unfunded and relatively expensive. So we use the foundation a lot. We also use the foundation for emergency issues. A year or so ago, our intoxicimeter, which is the machine that one blows into when one is suspected of driving while impaired under the influence of alcohol, died. And, uh, I did not have a budget item to replace that, and the Pales Park Police Foundation allowed us to be able to go out and emergently purchase another intoxicimeter so that we can continue to keep the streets, the streets safe for the rest of us. So you may have already seen the, uh, annual letter that comes out from the Pales Park Police Foundation. That's, uh, giving you some history and some of the applications that we use the money for. And if you're looking to support the police, the police department here in Pales Park, and you're of the inclination to support them with some, uh, financial support, that would be as good a place to be able to do that as any. We don't accept money while we're on the street, although quite oddly, we get offered it not because someone's trying to get out of the ticket or something, but someone has appreciation for what it is that we did. So, Pales Park Police Foundation, uh, you can find a link to the foundation on the Pales Park website. Um, uh, and if you have any other questions, you can drop me an email, dpolka, dpolka@palespark.org. So, uh, just a quick plug for the Pales Park Police Foundation. October's breast cancer awareness month, it's almost done. Uh, the color pink is a prominent feature of the campaign, and many of you commented on the fact that our Pales Park Police Department's been wearing their pink patches. Uh, so I thank, uh, the people who supported us to be able to manufacture those and put those on the uniforms. Um, and, uh, we've been affected personally in the department as well as in the village by people who've had their lives altered by the, uh, occurrence of, uh, breast cancer. And I appreciate the fact that, uh, our rank and file were able to, uh, participate in breast awareness month with their new patches. And then I'll close with a, uh, somewhat more fun activity. We do a lot of, uh, interactions with citizens to try and have and develop a relationship between the police department and the citizens of the park that doesn't just occur as a function of someone doing something wrong or running afoul of the law. Um, so you've seen multiple, we have multiple social interactions with coffee with the cop and, uh, coffee with the chief, and we have our own citizens on patrol program. But we, uh, someone suggested that we involve the children. And so we ran a coloring contest for the children of Pales Park ages 12 and under, and we challenged them to color a picture which showed a Pales Park police car, and, uh, we actually gave them some outlines for things to, uh, inspire them. So I'm going to show you a couple of these. Uh, all of these children have currently been acknowledged. But I have to show you my favorite one. No? Hands wrong. Thank you for keeping us safe. So, uh, if you haven't gotten your acknowledgement for your child's participation, either you submitted it anonymously or, uh, you haven't seen it yet because they just went out this week. So again, thanks, everybody, for participating. Uh, the chief is actually on patrol this evening, so he's not able to, uh, join us. And, uh, no further ado, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Calls and finances, we have the record this evening, so it's my report. I have, um, agenda item. The agenda matter is consideration of ordinance in Part 6, Chapter 698, Part 8, Title 2, Chapter 804, and 808 of the Pales Park Code in regard to video gaming. Several businesses who hold, uh, which hold, uh, village license have inquired over the past several years about being permitted to be licensed to have video gaming terminals under the process. The current village code, Chapter 698, prohibits video gaming. The village council adopted ordinance 2010, oh, one, on January 11th, 2010, to ban video gaming in Pales Park. The Illinois Gaming Act has been 230 I O C S 40 backslash one, enacted the Public Act 96 dash 34 on July 13th, 2009, allows for video gaming in the state of Illinois. In 2010, many of the communities around Pales Park opted out of video gaming, podcasting ordinances like the one adopted by the Pales Park Village Council. Today, only the neighboring community of Pales Heights still prohibits video gaming. Draft ordinance before the village council would repeal Chapter 698 of the village code and new sec, and add new sections to Chapters 804 and 808. The ordinance ever approved would create the ability for Pales Park to class A consumption on the premises, five licenses, uh, and class G consumption on premises at a golf course, one license. Liquor license holders, the ability to apply for a video gaming license. Each qualified applicant could apply to the village council for approval to create a video gaming license. At adoption, each category of video gaming license would be, uh, zero. The draft ordinance would do the following things. Prohibit video gaming cafes where more than 49% of residents would be from video gaming. Allow for the play of video games only during permitted hours of liquor sales. Video gaming terminals would be in a segregated area with a physical barrier and restricted to persons 21 years of age and older. They would allow for the total of video gaming terminals per establishment at six. Prohibit video gaming signage on the exterior of any establishment. Require video surveillance in the village gaming terminal area with, uh, with a minimum of 30 days of video recording storage. Each approved establishment would be required to have a direct connect burglar alarm system to the village's police department. We annually assess a $25 for video terminal operated in the village of Pales Park in addition to the annual cost of local license and other licenses. Staff has reviewed data from the Illinois Department of Revenue for municipal shared video gaming bodies for the communities also pressed for the warrant, of course, for the park, Pales Hills, Pales Springs, and Ward for the period of 2000, January 2019 to August 2041. The average annual municipal distribution per establishment in these eight communities is about $16,893. The average number of video gaming establishments per community is 23.63. So, uh, tonight, this evening, I, I am not asking for a motion to approve this ordinance on the purpose of this meeting. And my view, uh, for this particular agenda item is to have some discussion about the ordinance, um, to determine whether this is something that we consider, whether the ordinance requires some adjustments, uh, and it takes any other comment that comes to pass this year. And I want to add some thoughts. Now, I can start. So, uh, this, this is an issue that is really difficult for me. I, I'm not at the hand of a gaming person. And I realized early on in my life as an adult that I dislike losing more than I like winning. It's not a great combination for gambling, and I have no, uh, intrinsic enjoyment to the gaming. So I'm not someone that particularly enjoys, uh, these gaming machines. I have told, uh, the legislators at the time when they passed this that it was a horrible idea that you are creating a race to the bottom by, uh, permitting municipalities opt out. And so I'm not a huge opponent of gaming identity. Unfortunately, uh, it is all around us, and the battle of, uh, uh, whether to have gaming or not, I think it's already settled. It's, it's all around us. And, uh, the unfortunate result is that the businesses in Pales Park, and there are very few, that have, um, bars and entertainment establishments that have class A liquor licenses or class G liquor licenses are in a competitive disavowment with their neighboring, their establishments in neighboring communities who have these, uh, who have video gaming and who can gain revenues from this source. And so, uh, it, it's just become very difficult for these businesses, uh, it's created a more difficult environment. In addition, uh, we faced a pandemic for the last few years, and these, these businesses have been hurt by that. So, um, this is why, in my view, we're bringing the gaming ordinance forward for consideration. It is not, from my particular point of view, so that we can have additional revenue. That is a side benefit. If it were only that issue, I would not. If it were only that issue, I would not entertain in the ordinance of this nature. So I've got a few comments that I want to chime in and discuss the gaming ordinance as well. I do also have, after we talk about the general comments, some information, comments that have been sent to me, things that, you know, I wanted to bring to the council's consideration, just some public input, some interesting ideas. Please feel free to chime in.
Well, let me offer a couple of thoughts of your consideration. I did not come prepared this evening to address this matter. I'm trying to read the agenda. My assumption was the matter would be contained generally until November the eighth. However, I have never been one to be bashful about repaying on issues that are relevant to the residents of the Village of Park gaming. I was not elected to offer my personal opinion about what I think, all right? Do I have a personal opinion? Yeah. Is it relevant? And that's my position as elected official? No, it's not. So the question arises, why do we do this? There are a number of reasons for, and reasons against. There are those who would say that a number of municipalities are opting to use this as a source of revenue. I have not seen any studies that said gaming revenue would be sufficient to account for the majority of the revenue stream of a municipality. Is there some money coming in? Probably, yeah. Is it a bunch? Who knows? Is it enough to carry? No. So we must ask the question, is this something that businesses want because they're residents? Is this something that our residents will function on, to cultivate in the business? I don't know. They have to tell us. We have seen some comments on social media, growing, growing, pan. At the end of the day, we must ask ourselves a question. How are we, the village, going to sustain ourselves, short term and long term? Gaming isn't going to be it. Will it provide some sort of revenue? Depends on how the folks are going to use it. I don't know. Is this the road we want to go down? Residents have to tell us. Some facts, though, are crystal clear. Number one, the village does not have a commercial base, a robust commercial base, let me clarify that. We cannot raise property taxes without village residents' approval. The last time I checked, businesses were not banging on the door to get into the park. We have to incentivize people. We want them to come here. How are we going to do that? I don't know. Is gaming going to be a part of that incentivizing? Could be. But you have to tell us. You elected us to be your mouthpiece. We don't want to make decisions on our own without your input. Sitting in your houses on your hands don't give us direction. So we need you to tell us, what do you want us to do? Are we going to move forward? Or are we going to stand still? I don't know the answer. Can gaming be a part of the equation? It could be. I don't know. But you have to tell us. That's all we're asking. If you say yea, nay. If you say nay, give us some guidance. Don't leave us on an island to make this decision. I don't know. Unless that's what you want us to do. Your silence will let us know. That's all I got.
Do you want to go?
I'll let you play first.
Okay. I don't have a lot to say because a lot of what you said is what the sentiment that I hold. I think the biggest concern is that our existing establishments are asking for this because of competition around them. And as you mentioned, we do not have a robust commercial district. And we rely on those revenues for a lot of things in the village. And if this keeps businesses from leaving our town, it's something to consider. As far as how the ordinance was laid out with nothing on the outside of a building promoting that they have gambling and things like that, I'm a big fan of not advertising that those machines are inside. But I would hate to see restaurants and bars, the couple that we have, leave our village. It's difficult enough to get businesses to put their businesses in Payless Park because we're surrounded by forest preserves. And big commercial chains decide that they want to know how many people live within a five mile radius. When forest preserves are between you and all the people, there aren't too many people that live in a five mile radius. So it makes it challenging to bring businesses into the park. Very unique, and I think we can keep it that way. But this is something that we really need to look at carefully. And that's what I...
Excellent. I largely agree with what's been said by the commissioners that spoke before me. One of the most difficult things, challenges I've found in the years that we've been graced with the ability to serve as your commissioners is trying to be careful about expressing our own opinions versus looking at what the collective best is for the village. And I'll echo the sentiments that have already been stated. In the absence of any input, you get my opinion, and I'm not sure that that's why anybody elected me personally. The driving emphasis for this does not come from a city council saying, hey, you know, we could maybe build another seven feet of roads if we had a couple thousand dollars coming from video gaming. It comes from businesses coming to us and saying, we've lost a competitive edge that has been magnified by the fact that people don't go to restaurants and bars the same way that they did two and a half years ago. And while the threat of leaving the park hasn't been stated, certainly the desire to have alternative income streams for those places has been. So, I mean, that's true. I'm not a fan of video gambling either. The thought of sharing my space with someone banging on a machine is not my idea of a good night out. So that sort of leads me with two roads to take. One is you don't go there. And there are restaurants in the park that could conceivably start to participate in video gambling if indeed we allowed it in the park, that I would miss the opportunity to be able to go to. Or the second is you try and structure the ordinance in a way that the gambling can still occur, but it's not necessarily sharing the same place as my shrimp de jaune. So there have been lots of suggestions, some of which I'm sure the mayor will get to, about how to segregate the gambling and the patrons who don't wish to participate in that. We don't allow a lot of advertising in the park as it is. I mean, if someone wanted to put something in their print media, we could talk through those kinds of things. But something that's visible from the street or the park a lot, I think, is unacceptable. We don't allow those in storefronts as it is now. So I wouldn't see that as being any different. I think ultimately, if the decision is made against, then the businesses are going to have to decide how that affects them doing business going forward. I can also see a downside if we do enact an ordinance that allows it, where people may just vote with their feet and the businesses, whatever is offset by video gambling, is lost by the people who vote by video gambling. That's not a decision for me to make. That's not a decision for a council to make, one way or the other. And I think that time and market pressure will sort that stuff out as it becomes more apparent. I think tying it to a liquor license is a great way to be able to start. I laugh when I drive down Archer and see, you know, Dan Colke's doughnut and video gambling store. I mean, I, you know, if I'm going for doughnuts, the last thing I think I'm going to do is play a couple hands of blackjack. On the other hand, that place seems to be thriving. So, you know, who am I to say that that's not a way to make an honest call? I guess what I'm trying to say in the long run is the same thing that the two commissioners prior to me have echoed. If you don't tell us what you want, you're going to end up with what we want. And I don't know if that's necessarily the right way to go about it. And I think that we can structure an ordinance such that it's not an in-your-face kind of activity. And whatever we do is not permanently irrelevant. So if it needs to be massaged, or if it needs to be altered, or if it needs to be taken away or reinstated, however we play that out, I mean, we can always revisit those things. We're revisiting the decision we made years ago. But I'd encourage you, if you're within the sound of my voice or you're talking to somebody, reach out, let us know. Actually, we'd like you to reach out anytime you have some issue that you want to talk about. We have social events in the village where you can talk to us easily. We have email. I answer my emails, some of the rest of the commissioners. We have telephone lines here at the village. You can give us a call and leave us a message, and we'll get back to you. Dropbox, say hello, you know where I am. So again, this is one of those decisions where I could make an argument on both sides. And if you want to end up with my opinion, don't tell me anything. If you'd rather have your opinion weigh in on this, let us know what you think. So that's all I got.
Perfect. So I just, you know, as you may know, I've posted several times on social media regarding the coming of the consideration of this ordinance. I've asked people to comment. I've received some comments. I just wanted to share a few things with you through your consideration. Someone suggested concern about the signage and raised the question about, I understand no outside signs are permitted, but what about signs invisible to the outside from the inside? That actually is addressed in this version of the ordinance, because it doesn't just talk about signs on the outside, but it says any signs advertising video gaming that are visible from the exterior of the establishment. So I think that issue is addressed. There was a comment from one person who contacted me regarding the segregation of the gaming. And here, state ordinance basically says that gaming has to be segregated to prevent those under the age of twenty-one from entering the area. For a drinking or a bar establishment, that's the whole art. So really, there's no segregation required by the state ordinance from other patrons in the park. And the question I have for your consideration is, do we want to further define this ordinance to create that segregation? That's the answer, but just to reconsider and thought about. That's, you know, something for our attorneys to think about, you know, what's being done in other towns on that particular time. Was a good question I had. One person asked whether this, why should this go to a RAF? So I throw that question out there for you. Certainly makes it easier for me. I don't have to make the decision. But there are pros and cons of having a RAF. If there's any other questions, if I have any other input that I received that I thought I might share tonight. But I appreciate you all writing in with your thoughts. And sure, absolutely.
Just based on what you just said, that generated a question for me, for the council. Does the state statute allow municipalities to impose restrictions that are greater than those that are set forth in the statute itself?
It does.
I'm sorry?
It does.
Okay.
The statute does require requirements as to how it has to be set aside and blocked off with the restriction. It also says that somebody of the age of twenty-one who is an employee at this establishment has to be able to view the entire area where the video gaming is taking place at all times so that there's an employee monitoring the space, so that nobody under twenty-one actually goes into the space. So there are requirements on separation of the facility and monitoring the facility, but you can put additional requirements in there. I mean, one of them that the mayor touched upon was the, or at least was in your ordinance, is the tape of a, you know, a video surveillance camera that has to be kept for thirty days where you can see who entered that. So you do have some flexibility in additional restrictions on the area.
Okay. I don't believe it, the point, but let me ask it carefully. As a general matter, did the general assembly craft the statute such that municipalities can't go further than those restrictions imposed in the statute? Not in any individual, specific area of the statute, but as a global thing? Can we go further? Or do we have to pick and choose the sections of the statute that will permit a municipality to go further than those that are imposed by the general assembly?
The way you're doing it is you are doing it through your liquor licensing, and you have wide discretion in liquor license regulations that apply to your various classes of liquor license. So while the statute has its own restrictions on video gaming, because in order to be, get a video gaming license, the state law requires that the establishment, other than a truck stop establishment, has to also sell liquor for consumption on the licensed premises, you have regulatory powers through liquor licensing. The way this current ordinance is set up, it's in your liquor code.
Okay. So the liquor license, liquor code gives us the authority to, okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you. I just didn't ask correctly.
That's how you get around it. Not around it, but that's how you get the regulations.
We don't want to say around.
No, no, no.
That's how you ensure it.
That's how you ensure compliance.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
I'm here as the non-lawyer.
So I would maintain a motion to table this to our next council.
Continue it.
Continue.
So it doesn't have to be taken off the table?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion to continue this matter to our next meeting, which is, can the board manage your name deliberately?
November eight.
November eight. So, November eighth, we have a motion, a second, we'll debate this later.
Yes.
Yes, for sure.
Yes. Yes. Thank you all. I just have one other, I want to comment, and that was our court gallery had a fundraiser this weekend, on Saturday. had a fundraiser this weekend, on Saturday. It was an immersive Spanish culinary dance experience. I attended with my wife and I, and it was really a nice event. They had Chef Charles, who is a well-known chef in Spain, traveled to the Chicago area with which he has some connection to serve as our chef. He had some dance performances. Really, really nice event. And I just wanted to applaud all the folks at McCord for the event. Court, very long. Do you have anything else? Commissioner Van Hooijen.
I would like to give the council's consideration, that being a resolution requesting and authorizing the county of Cook to submit a no cash bid to acquire a tax certificate purchase for the non-payment of taxes on a certain parcel of property. This parcel of property, vacant property, is on the south side of 123rd Street, almost directly across the street from the village commuter lock. It is up for the tax sale for 2018 property taxes. This is one of two properties that comprise the former Payless Realty property. It's only a 50 by 113 foot parcel that's located 50 feet off the corner of 82nd and 123rd Street. The other parcel of property was previously purchased as scavenger sale to a private property. The county does have a no cash bid program that the village has utilized in the past. We acquired parcels of property on 83 or the 86 Avenue Trailhead and have not done anything with those as of yet, but those could be put to use in the future. This particular parcel of property is found in the, is identified in section four of the village's comprehensive plan, which is called the Commercial Areas Plan. Subject parcel is part of the east 123rd Street corridor. And the plan states that the east 123rd Street corridor area provides unique assets that can serve as a foundation with a consideration of appropriate commercial development. If the village council approves this resolution, the village could be aligned to receive this parcel and put into play at the appropriate time for commercial development. The no cash bid is a, if there's no cash, the village would not come out of pocket for it. They would, in essence, take it off the property tax rolls for the time being until it was reutilized. The village would acquire it as an open space for the time being. Again, the village council felt it appropriate. So this starts the process. There has to be another sale. There has to be the 2018 taxes, the object for sale twice. So we're a little bit ahead of it, but we want to be aligned, sure that sale to receive this parcel of property and then put it to play at the appropriate time for the appropriate use of the village's C-Step questions.
No, I just have a comment. The actions proposed to me this evening would be consistent with those contemplated in the comprehensive plan. I don't see a downside to this of a recommended adoption.
I'd second that.
That made the case of going to make a motion to adopt, to approve Resolution 2021-R-09, resolution requesting and authorizing the county of Cook to submit a no cash bid to acquire a tax certificate of purchase for non-payment of taxes on a certain property south side of 123rd Street, 50 feet east of 82nd Avenue, and 23-26-403-002-40, as manual C-Step.
So seconded.
Your motion is seconded. Will the court please come along?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Holt?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
I have nothing further.
All right. Announcements. 2020 census results. The village has received certification from Illinois Secretary of State Jesse White for the 2020 census. The 2020 Decennial Census taken on April 1st, 2020 has been filed. The village of Payless Park's population is 4,009,000. And then this is an increase of 52 people from the 2010 census that were a worse sufferer. Women's Club Blood Drive at the Payless Park. Women's Club Blood Drive will be held on Tuesday, November 9th, from 3 p.m. to 7 p.m. at the Payless Park Corporation Center. To schedule a call, email Marion Parkins at m a p a r k i n s forty-five at a t t dot net. That's again, m a p a r k i n s forty-five at a t t dot net. Call points are preferred, but walk-ins are welcome. Stag High School Arts and Craft Festival. Stag High School Music Boosters Arts and Craft Festival. We will be held on Saturday, November 13th, from 9 a.m. to 12 p.m. Sunday, November 14th, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. There will be a variety of activities, including pictures with and support of this, a list about helps raise funds from music programs at Stag High School. And that concludes my announcements. Do you want to add to the audience? Would like to address the council at this time. Hearing no such requests, I will seek a motion to return to the meeting at this time.
So... Second.
Your motion is seconded. The court please come along.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Yes. And motion carries. Thank you all and good evening.
Be safe out there.